All right, I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, February 28th. If we could all please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
...............................................................
Okay, good evening, everybody. First, I just want to have a roll call, please.
Stephen Arthur.
Present.
Alex Delly-Polly.
Here.
Catherine Grudy.
Here.
Karen Lunsford. Colin Mauer. Michelle Overyder. Professor Judy Sugarman.
Okay, so we know Karen Lunsford is out this evening. All right, our agenda this evening, we'll have two educational presentations, one from Mad City Money, or the Great Lakes Credit Union. We'll have an update also from the Community Partnership for Healthy Youth. President's Report, reports from our two student reps. Superintendent's Report, we'll have an invitation for public comment. I'll remind anybody from the public wishing to speak that we would like to limit that to three minutes, please. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, review a number of items on the Program and Personnel Committee, as well as the Facilities and Finance Committee. There's an update from the Special Education District of Lake County, and then we should be all set. All right, anything else? Okay. Our educational presentation, Mr. Lovey, if you could...
Yes, this evening, as you mentioned, we have two presentations. And for the first, I am very proud to introduce a former Vernon Hills High School graduate, Ms. Lizzie Childers, who is an employee of a Great Lakes Credit Union. And they have partnered with us in an educational project called Mad City Money, and I'm going to let Lizzie tell you a little bit about that this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Like she said, my name's Lizzie Childers, and I work at Great Lakes Credit Union. I graduated from Vernon Hills in 2005, and I went to Western Kentucky University and got a bachelor's degree in advertising and marketing, and then I started working at Great Lakes, and I've been there for a little over a year. So with this presentation, we actually brought Mad City Money into Vernon Hills right when I started working there. And I contacted Mrs. Shipley because I knew that she was, you know, the go-to person for that. So let's go through the presentation. We've actually been to a number of schools. We've been to Vernon Hills numerous times, Warren Township, Antioch, Lakes, and Allendale, and we just finished at Gray's Lake Central. And we're actually going to be going to Barrington, Carmel, back to Vernon Hills on April 12th for two sessions, and hopefully to Waukegan. So we do numerous promotions for different things. We put it on our website, we put it on our social media sites, we try to post the event in schools to get kids to come, as well as in public libraries if we use them as a location. But at Vernon Hills, we use different classrooms and multipurpose rooms. We really try to make these events colorful and interactive and lively. They don't take up too much space, and they're really enjoyable and kind of small. They consist of ten merchants, including the credit union. We sell cars to kids, houses. They need to get things for their babies, food, the mall, different things, just different temptations that they would need to pay attention to. So we in all need twelve volunteers, which come from all different areas of our credit union, and they take time out of their busy schedules to conduct these with us, and it's all done on a volunteer basis by them. How it works, the kids are asked in the beginning to choose an occupation, and they can't see the details. So they could be a carpenter, or a bank teller, or anything under the sun that comes in from our program. And after that, they're given a spouse, and a spouse's income, a child, and their age, debt, and also they can total their income. And they're supposed to create a monthly budget with no more than a hundred dollars left after they purchase things from all of the merchants. So after they do that, they have to kind of decipher between their needs and wants. And a lot of kids, of course, have a lot more wants than needs, and they always try to go for the most expensive house, or the most expensive car in the beginning, and they learn from it. So we also have a visit from the fickle finger of fate, who is the unexpected windfall in expenses. So the fickle finger will come around and say, "Your house set on fire. If you don't have homeowner's insurance, you have to pay four hundred dollars." And of course, the kids are not very excited about that at all. They get a little hesitant about that. So here are some testimonials that we have, coming from different students that we've been through, and from employees. So this student said that she learned the importance of creating a budget, which is great, and that you can go visit the credit union to get advice. This branch manager from our Libertyville branch said that the experience, the first time she did it, was very eye-opening, and that many of the students did not realize how much things actually cost. They always think that their parents will just take care of it, and that's not actually the case. Here we have a few more photos. As you can see, different stations usually ask the merchants to bring in props with them, and we have different posters, so it kind of adds a personal feel to it. This, a bank teller with us, said that it was great, and in the end, how much they take away about budgeting correctly in the beginning. Sometimes some of the students aren't sure exactly what they should be doing, and at the end, they kind of actually learn from it. And here's a few more pictures of our employees interacting with students. One of the things that a lot of our employees say is that they wish that they would have had a program like this when they were in high school, to actually have a real-life experience where they could learn how to budget for different things, because, you know, when you graduate from high school, like, of course, you feel like your parents are going to pay for everything, and they really don't. So we also had Rob, a student, that stated that he would like to talk to a financial service advisor while creating a budget, which is great, especially coming from the credit union. We're always here to help people when it comes to different things like this. And another one of our project managers said that they really wished that they would have had the same program. And here's a few more pictures of our merchants. And of course, in the corner, we have our famous car salesman, and he has his nice car salesman jacket, and has flags to really make... The kids really like to get involved with him and say different things to him. He always makes great jokes, especially if the kids leave their children behind. So that's great. And here's a few more photos. And another girl who said that she wished that she would have had this in high school, and that hopefully the kids will learn to appreciate life and their parents more, which is great. Everybody, as a parent, always wants to be appreciated for everything they do for their kids. This is an example of our debriefing session. In the end, at the end of each session, we kind of go through and ask the kids different questions about their experience they had. And for example, we ask, you know, "How many of you were able to buy an expensive house and an expensive car and keep it?" And a lot of kids say that they couldn't, that they kind of went all out in the beginning. They always go for houses and cars first, and then they have to return their sports car at the end and visit the credit union for advice. So it's always kind of fun in that way. And at the end, they all receive a certificate of achievement, saying that they completed the program. And right here, we just have an example of a press release that we did, but that's pretty much Mad City Money in itself, and we always hope that the kids take away something great from it. Do we have any questions?
Sure.
Is it, how many sessions do you... First of all, how many students do you work with at one time? Do you work with them for one session, or how many sessions?
Well, we do it just one session at a time. At Vernon Hills, we actually have started to do it with fifty kids at once, which is the only school that we've done that many students. Usually, it's between twenty-five and thirty. So we have to ask for double the volunteers to do the ones at Vernon Hills in order to be able to tend all the students.
Is it one-session deal?
Yeah, it's two and a half hours long. Anyone else? No? Well, thank you very much for having me.
Great, thank you very much.
I'd like to also acknowledge Mrs. Nancy Shipley and Mrs. Leslie Nardini, our staff members, who have kind of made the connection with Great Lakes Credit Union. Next on our agenda is Mrs. Margaret Pither, and she is one of the advisors for our Community Partnership for Healthy Youth. And she's going to introduce some of our student representatives to tell you a little bit what this organization has been doing over the past few months.
Thank you. I'm Margaret Pither, SAP Coordinator at Vernon Hills High School, and I do this in partnership with the SAP at Libertyville High School. He is not able to be here, but he'll be on a video in a few seconds. So in an effort to prevent and address underage drinking and teen substance abuse, Community High School District 128 hosted a roundtable discussion with community members on May 29th, 2007. That was the beginning of our community coalition called Community Partnership for Healthy Youth. Participants included area school administrators and staff, police and fire department personnel, parent and student representatives, village administrators, business leaders, and a representative from the Lake County Health Department. All in attendance shared their concerns and were in agreement to have a proactive stance, even though our drug and alcohol survey statistics showed that most of our students are drug-free. Parent and student committees were formed, and we set forth to write down our goals. And our goals included empowering our students to become more models, to send out the message of staying drug-free, to increase community awareness and parent awareness, and also to empower our teachers and our communities, actually, our culture in our high school. So what we did was put together a brochure. In that first year, we looked for money, and wrote for a grant, and received some money from Seabrook Goodman for three years. And that helped us do our first goals of having parent networking coffees at both schools, and breakfast with businesses, where we were able to share our goals with them, and then also offer plaques to the ones that were able to help us. Also, we have used that money to have our T-shirts and pens, and our clings that we'll pass around and show you in a few minutes, so that businesses can show that they're part of the Community Partnership for Healthy Youth, and our students will also be able to know and get used to the logo, so they know that these businesses have the same goals. We also did a DVD freshman class assignment that was instituted last year, and now every freshman in both schools has a way to talk with their parents about drug and alcohol use through this video and through this assignment. And so now, that's kind of part of it. Now we'll have Colleen and Jessica talk about what we've done in the past with our activities for teens, and what we're going to do in the future.
Okay, hi. My name is Jessica Eckles. I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School, and this is actually my first year on CPHY. And just to talk about some past events that have happened throughout the year, and even a couple of years ago, we've had both school districts, or both schools, Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School, get together and come up with these fun activities to do outside of school, so the students could get involved in some healthy lifestyle activities. These include band jams, cosmic bowling, and improv playhouse with some professional actors and actresses, that just basically all the students could come together and enjoy themselves, and meet new people. And we've also had many restaurants sponsor us, and that includes Chipotle, Jason's Deli, and so many more, because all the high school students especially love those restaurants. And one of our biggest events that we're most proud of is Project Cool Mom. And what that is, is a panel board last year came together, and they just wanted to discuss how some of the teenagers at these high schools are not really living the best healthy lifestyle, and some of the parents kind of just are okay with that, you know? And so the mission was to take a different and unique approach to redefine a cool mom, and like, what a really cool parent could be, and just how the parents could talk about, you know, parties with their kids, what's going on, and to prevent any of that kind of healthy lifestyle to happen in the future. So we're going to show you guys a quick video of a band jam that happened just a little bit ago last year from Libertyville at Worley Ball. So enjoy.
And while we're doing that, we'll pass out some of our brochures.
The Community Partnership for Healthy Youth is committed to creating fun, exciting events for local teens that are free of drugs and alcohol. Among their many events, the CPHY sponsors a number of local band jams. Teens from Libertyville and the surrounding communities get together in a safe atmosphere to perform and support their fellow musicians. Patch.com caught up with them at the Worley Ball in Vernon Hills.
My name is Scott Schneider. I'm the Student Assistance Program Coordinator for Libertyville High School, and I actually work in conjunction with Community Partnership for Healthy Youth, which often stands for CPHY. And it's actually a coalition that networks with local businesses, school districts, parents in the community, to sponsor and host events for students in the area that promote healthy decision-making, also encourage substance-free, as far as heroin and alcohol. Make sure that they host events so the students can actually be part of that, they can go to events, not worry about any alcohol being there, or any drugs being there. And that's a lot what CPHY is part of. I know there's a lot of different band jams that are put together throughout the community. CPHY is a lot of interest in that, and so occasionally, CPHY will host some band jams in District 128. We've done a few already. We actually hosted one last month. Tonight, we're hosting one here at Worley Ball.
My name is Sophie Malecki. I am the Master of Ceremonies, the MC tonight.
I'm Chris Laipole from Libertyville, Illinois. I play with All You Can Need. We've done three band jams so far. What's really great about these is that they give kids alternatives to drugs and alcohol and things to do like Friday nights.
We're voodoo, and I'm Scott.
I'm Ted.
And Eric. That's Eric. And I play a western lead guitar. He plays acoustic keys.
I play bass.
This is our second band jam.
Me and you. As a band, voodoo. This is our first band jam.
Some of us have been doing this for a while, others that might be new to this whole arena. So we don't make it a competition at all. We just want to make sure we can build community and be part of that. You know, a lot of what I do outside of CPHY, I hear a lot of students and parents that just often say, "You know, there's really nothing to do." CPHY offers them opportunities that they can do stuff if they're doing outside in a school setting. And they don't have to worry about drugs or alcohol when they present in those events. So it gives them an opportunity to really tap into those events and not have to worry about any of those things. They can come out, have a great time, socialize with other peers, and have just a fun...
For Libertyville Patch, I'm Scott Metzger.
Thank you to Libertyville Patch for that.
Thank you, Colleen.
Hi, I'm Colleen, and I'm a senior at Libertyville. I have been part of CPHY since the beginning, so I think this is our third year. And I'm here to talk about kind of, we're just taking a look at the future. This year, we've been focusing a lot on fundraising. We have our window clings that we've been talking to businesses. We've broken out in small groups and walked around downtown Libertyville and all over Vernon Hills, just trying to get some businesses to help sponsor us, whether it's financially, or if it's providing a place that we could do an event, just any sort of thing that they can offer us. And our hope for it, we're hoping to do this next year, but we will have a window cling in the businesses that have helped sponsor, and then we'll be able to get a little sticker that people can put on either their driver's license or their student ID. So if they'll show it to these businesses, there'll be certain, you know, certain perks that they can get, whether it's, you know, a 10% discount, or, you know, we'll stay open, you know, an hour later, if you have, you know, if you're from CPHY, and all sorts of stuff. We are also going to go to rotary clubs and start getting, going to village meetings and just talk to anyone that we can about our mission. And I also want to talk about the events that we're looking at for, you know, even starting on Sunday, we have another band jam at the Sullivan Center. So we've been getting the word out. These have been all over the hallways at LHS in Vernon Hills. Also, coming up on April 21st, we're doing a dodgeball tournament at the Sports Complex. So everybody's pretty excited about that. We're hoping that there will be a good turnout. And then we're also, this summer, we want to do a movie out on the green, and get, you know, a big projector, and have students be able to come and sit out on the lawn and watch movies in the summer when it's warm. It's just nice to think about now. And then there's my favorite thing that's coming up in the fall. I'm really sad because I'll be graduating, but at Potbellys, we have talked to Potbellys about doing this, and they're going to do kind of a milkshake contest between the two schools. So Potbellys will come up, you know, with five or 10 new milkshake flavors, whether it's, you know, a combination of sundaes, or, you know, we haven't really gone over the details. And then people from LHS and Vernon Hills will be able to vote for their favorite one, and the favorite one will be called the Vernon Hills Shake, or the LHS Shake, and that will be on their menu. So you'll be able to order, you know, the LHS High School Milkshake. So that's going to be in the fall. There's also going to be karaoke at that event, and all sorts of fun stuff. So we're really excited. So yeah, we're always looking out for all sorts of fun events. I'm sure there'll be more on our agenda soon, but this is what we have set for right now. So I just want to thank you all for listening. Does anyone have any questions?
How many events a year do you... Are you able to set for?
We try to do one per month.
Yeah, we have one a month, whether it's a band jam, or if it's an improv playhouse sort of thing.
And not a question, but just a comment. I can tell you, having had the great opportunity to sit in with the group several times over the past few years, this is a really neat partnership, and they are doing incredible work. So thanks to you, and Margaret, to you and our partners, our business partners in the area, and the villagers for working with us. And I think, again, it demonstrates the spirit of 128 in terms of working with our surrounding communities to help our students. So, and thanks to the students for your work on this. This is really good stuff that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, President's Report, just two things to note. One in your packet is the application for the Illinois Association of School Board's Spring Dinner Meeting, which is at Stevenson this year. So very close by, I'm sure there are a number of things on your calendar for March 17th, but this would be one that is probably well worth considering. And the only other thing I would mention is, if you've read the newspapers lately, there's a lot going on in Springfield. So if you haven't regularly been reading a lot of the email that Denise sends, this would be a very good time to do so, because there's a lot of very important legislation pending, and other things that I think are important for all of us to keep an eye on, because there's no question that some of the things that are pending could have significant and broad impact, even here in our local communities. Okay? School Board Representatives, who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Okay. So I know it makes things a little more difficult for you guys, but we all enjoyed our snow days. So those were certainly great. And then Turnabout was last Saturday. There were good reviews. Apparently, the music was better, and the light show was pretty cool. So everyone enjoyed that. We also had our Winter Reprimand Assembly on Friday, where we crowned our Turnabout King, Land and Iron. And we had a great assembly with intermural basketball teams taking on our faculty teams, which is super exciting. And the Select 16 Court had elaborate and wildly entertaining entrances to the assembly, so that was really fun to see. Also, we've had all of our winter sports kind of wrapping up. Swimming State Finals was last weekend, and Ben Snyder finished ninth in state, so we're very proud of him. And our math team won regionals and is advancing to the state tournament. IHSA solo and ensembles this weekend, so good luck to all our musicians participating. Spring sports are starting. Everyone's excited for that, especially those who play spring sports. And spring break plans are kind of coming along. I hear a lot of people talking about where they're going, and I'm jealously thinking I want to go somewhere, too. But more and more seniors are hearing where we'll be going next year, so we're all excited to kind of see where things go this spring.
A lot of the same things are happening at Vernon Hills High School. Boom Entertainment was a big hit at Turnabout this year. That was something we did differently with entertainment and the music, and people seemed to like that. Also, on the half-day that we had, students seemed to have fun during their lunch periods. We had Qdoba burritos being sold, and Bago in the foyer, so it's really fun on a day when there are short periods as well. And we restarted our COVE project through first class this month, where we're continuing to support Uganda and the school that we built there, and still continuing donating and trying to help out the students there. A new project that we started with that is, if students could donate one dollar every Friday from the day we started that lesson in the middle of February until the March lesson, they could get a bracelet each Friday versus a string, then each consecutive Friday the letters to spell out COVE, C-O-V-E. And the thing we focused was that how one dollar that each student can bring in can help like two students in Uganda, and like, every little thing counts. So that's been really nice. It's been a big success so far. The same day as that lesson, we also had the Click It or Take It, where, I don't know if you've seen it around the school, but our student liaison officers and a couple of students were really stressing how you should not text and drive and the consequences of that. And that was the day where students signed a pledge that they wouldn't text and drive. They passed out rings. It was a big thing during lunch periods and throughout the day. They had raffles, and they even put up signs of things that have happened in the past, and even the week before that, to raise awareness. Another thing is, winter sports have been wrapping up, like Hannah said, and Vernon Hills has been quite successful so far. Ali Tran took sixth place at state for gymnastics in the bars. And we had two people at the wrestling meet at second in state, Jeremy Brazil and Gideon Yim. This was the first time that Vernon Hills has even placed that high, and it was just an awesome job that they did. Math team also won regionals, so they are heading to state. And that boys' basketball, they're beginning playoffs this week, so lots of things are wrapping up. At the same time, today was the official start date for a lot of spring sports. So I guess it's just a busy time for students, and everyone's getting ready for the spring weather.
Great, thanks to both of you. Great job. Okay, in our Superintendent's Report, I'm going to suggest we move item number three to the beginning. So I'd like to introduce a special guest tonight. We're very honored that Mr. Terry Webler, the Mayor of Libertyville, is here, and he's going to introduce the Brainerd Preservation Committee.
Thank you, President Grudy, and board members. I'm here this evening because, as you're aware, several years ago, the district leased the Brainerd Building to the Village of Libertyville. The Village of Libertyville then turned around and leased the Brainerd Building by agreement with the parties to the Brainerd Community Center, a not-for-profit, who is now working to redo the Brainerd Building to turn it into a community center. At this point in time, at the end of this year, we do have a lease payment due to the district, and the Brainerd Community Center has asked if we would consider extending that payment by three years based on what's happened with the economy. Our board has discussed that. We would like to see Brainerd go ahead and do whatever we can to preserve that. And so our board is recommending that, yes, we grant approval of the lease based on the high school's decision. Because of that, again, Brainerd made a presentation to our board, and they are here this evening, and we've asked them to make a presentation to your board, so that you can, again, decide whether you would be willing to extend our lease, so we can extend theirs. So without further ado, the President of the Brainerd Community Center, Mr. Jim Moran.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jim Moran. I'm the President of the Brainerd Community Center Organization. I'm also a 1995 graduate of Libertyville High School. Most of the, a good number of our board is here tonight as well. Basically, in a nutshell, what we're asking for, we're asking for an adjustment to the current agreement between the District 128, the Village of Libertyville, and the Brainerd Community Center. The current agreement started in 2006, was a 50-year agreement that would expire in 2056. What we're asking for is to keep those dates in place, but the financial terms, where payments were due, the first payment was due in 2011, the balloon payment of $250,000, and then $50,000 a year through 2031. What we're asking for is an adjustment in those dates to have our first payment due in 2014, which would be three years from now, and then the final payment in 2034. So in a nutshell, that's what we're asking for. What I would like to do at this time is introduce Mike Coleman, who's working with our organization. He's an architect in Libertyville. And Mike's going to talk some of the sustainability of the Brainerd project, also some of the green initiatives, and some of the other initiatives that we're working on with our
Thanks, Jim, and I thank you all.
Thanks, Jim, and I thank you all for taking the time to listen to us tonight. As Jim said, my name is Mike Coleman. I'm a local architect. I live in the district, the high school district as well. I'm also the Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission for the Village of Libertyville, but I'm a volunteer, just like a lot of people in the room here today. I'm a volunteer. I do this on my free time and I'm here because I want to make sure that as a community, we do the right thing. I've been involved in a number of committees, commissions that have taken a look at the Brainerd Building going all the way back to 1995. So personally, I'm very familiar with the building and all its peculiarities and certainly all the opportunities that exist with the facility today. What is the right thing? Well, we believe the right thing is to recycle the building into a community center and also doing it in a way that presents it as a model of sustainability, one that will continue to serve the residents in the district for decades to come, just as it has for decades before us. When I use the word sustainability, I'm speaking about environmental, social, and economic demands, all three of which are critical to the long-term success of this project. So start with the environmental aspect of the project. Many people believe that, especially in the building industry, that the greenest buildings are the ones that are already built, and I certainly do agree with that concept. Why? Because it's really ultimate form of recycling. A building like the Brainerd Building contains a tremendous amount of embodied energy, which is the total expenditure of energy involved in the construction and all its constituent materials. In the case of the Brainerd Building, we're looking at about $3 million of natural resources that are contained within that facility, just in terms of its raw energy content. You know, we just feel it would be ashamed to throw that away. As confirmation of how sustainable this project really is, we've registered as a LEED, Certified Project or LEED Registered Project, which for those of you who are familiar, LEED stands for Leadership in Environment and Energy, Energy and Environmental Design. And it's really a benchmark for how sustainable a project can be in today's marketplace. We've studied the building. I actually was teaching a course at the College of Lake County this fall. We used it as a sort of a model to determine how sustainable this project could be. And without really doing anything special to it, it could be a LEED silver or gold project, which puts it pretty high up on the sustainability scale. Green, very green by today's standards, as green as a lot of the new buildings that are being built today. I mean, why is this building considered green? What makes it green? Well, first of all, it's in a fantastic location. It offers access to mass transit, to pedestrians, to a lot of different community resources that you can get to without getting your car necessarily having to drive there. That's one aspect of it being green. It's very structurally sound. All the, all the organizations and committees that have studied this in the past have determined that this building is structurally sound and it is really a prime candidate for reuse. And it's really, it's well-built. It was built, you know, in the 1920s, 1917 to be exact, and it was built at a time when things had to be done differently. It was built to take advantage of the natural resources as best we could. It has operable windows. It has a nice south-facing elevation. It's built to last. As Mayor Weppler said, the Village of Libertyville supports the concept, but one of the critical components obviously to success is, is the environmental sustainability, economic sustainability of a project like this as well. We are confident that once the doors are opened to this building, that user fees can pay for the cost of the building to maintain and operate this facility. Obviously, this is a huge piece of the puzzle. We have letters of interest that we've collected from over 15 groups throughout the community here that have said they would like to be tenants within this new community center should we get to that, to that point. And we're very confident that those user fees will retire the cost of whatever it is that it's going to take to operate the facility. Those range from cultural arts, music, theater, dance organizations, a number of civic groups, a lot of educational opportunities that exist as well. So I think there's a huge opportunity for us as a, as a community to really take advantage of this building and recycle it into something that we can all take advantage of. Cultural sustainability, this is maybe the most important aspect of the whole project. Currently, the Brainerd Buildings are on the National Register of Historic Places, so it's been determined by powers higher than we are that it does have cultural significance. There's been decades of students that have attended that building and have enjoyed the use of the facility. They have some fantastic memories associated with it. So from a cultural standpoint, again, it has a significance to a lot, a big, a big percentage of our community that we live in. And I think even beyond that, it's a great opportunity for us to set an example for ourselves, our children, and future generations that we need to take care of our resources, that really this is our responsibility, something that we all need to take care of seriously and really we have an opportunity to do that today. What have we done so far? Well, I can tell you after being involved in this for many, many years that there's a new, a new momentum here, a new passion. There's a lot more awareness in the community, I think, thanks to the current board and some of the activities that have been going on recently. We've launched newsletters, email campaigns. There's a lot of passion and a lot more awareness, I think, today than there was a year or two ago, and that's going to translate into action and it already has. In 2010, as I said, we completed stabilization plans for the building. We know what it's going to take to stabilize those buildings. We know what it's going to cost to do that. We've completed the LEED registration process as well, which gets us off the blocks in terms of how sustainable and green this project can be, which we feel opens a lot of doors to us as well. And we are making progress in spite of the economy. We really simply need more time right now. The next steps, we need to finalize our business plan, which we're working on diligently. We need to define the development program, which we're also working on. We need to secure funding and resources. We need to consider the development activities, whether this is going to be a phased project or it's going to be done at one time. Those are all things we're looking at very closely right now and we're starting to answer more and more questions every day. Once we get all those questions answered, we'll begin development activities and then hopefully soon, the doors will open to the community to put this building back into service and be able to take advantage of it. It's really up to us all to do this. As I said, I'm a volunteer. I know there's a lot of people out there that aren't here tonight that feel the same way that I do, that are passionate about this, that really feels strong that this is the time. We don't have a lot of time left. It's really now or never for us. So we do appreciate your consideration and, you know, hopefully you'll, you'll agree with, with our plea tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks very much. Anybody have any questions?
Well, I would just note that Mayor Weppler and the Preservation Group attended our recent committee meeting and did a more extensive presentation. We had very good discussion around the presentation and the plans for the future building.
Great. Okay. Mayor Weppler, Jim, Mike, and everybody on the committee, thank you for all your hard work. I know it's a very challenging project and some very challenging times, but, you know, we continue to support all the hard work. I think it's a wonderful thing you're doing in the community and we very much appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to ask for a motion to extend the lease as requested, subject to final attorney review.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll. Any discussion?
I have one question. In terms of the language of the motion, are we really extending the lease or we are amending the terms of the lease for when the lease payments will begin? It's still a 50-year lease from 2011 to, or 2006 to 2056. We are just moving out when the lease payments will begin from 2011 to 2014. The lease is still the same term.
The expiration date of the lease remains the same. We're simply moving the balloon payment and all subsequent payments.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
So we're not extending the term of the lease?
Right. So then I suggest we amend the motion to just saying we are amending the terms of the lease to when the lease payments will begin, the balloon payment and the rate annual payment, lease payments, from 2011 to 2014, running through 2034.
Okay, so what I asked was a motion to extend the lease as requested. Okay? So if we can just clarify, requested was to simply extend the date at which the original payment is due. Okay? And clarify, that does not mean that we're going to extend the term of the lease. Okay? Is that fair? Okay. Good point.
And remember, pending a final attorney review.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Hi.
Eli Pollie.
Hi.
Rudy.
Hi.
Mauer.
Hi.
Sugarman.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you again for all of your hard work. Okay, ongoing superintendent's report.
Okay. Before we start tonight, I do want to note for the record that our student board representatives did lobby the superintendent for extended snow days. And as much as I like them, unfortunately, we couldn't do that. So I'm sorry. I have to apologize to you guys before you're no longer our board representatives, okay? We have lots of good news and certainly the students have touched on that tonight. So let's start. District 128 has received the School Search 2011 Bright Red Apple Award for Excellence in Education. District 128 is one of only 73 Illinois school districts out of 868 school districts to receive this award. The Bright Red Apple Award of Excellence in Education, which District 128 has received annually since the award's inception, is based on five key factors: academic performance, pupil-teacher ratio, expenditure per pupil, educational level of teachers, and average teacher salary. District 128 ranks strong in all five family favor categories. So again, quite an honor for the entire District 128 school community. District 128 Assistant Superintendent for Business Yasmin Data and her staff were once again honored for their excellent work when they received their second consecutive Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, or ASBO. The award is given for excellence in preparation and issuance of the 2010-11 School System Annual Budget. So Yas, congratulations to you and your staff for your continued excellent work in financial management. Good job. Vernon Hills Science, Vernon Hills High School's science teacher Jay Wawren has been named Outstanding High School Physics Teacher in the Illinois Section of the American Association of Physics Teachers. Wawren will receive the award at the Illinois Science Education Conference in the fall of 2011. Teachers receive the award based on exceptional performance, enthusiastic student response, teaching philosophy, impact on students, professional development, incorporation of state and national science teaching standards, and innovations in teaching. And I think obviously we are very, very proud of Mr. Wawren. And Ellen, I don't, I don't know if you want to make any comments about Jay at this point or...
I just echo your sentiments that it is quite an honor. We were very happy last week when we heard the news and very, very outstanding.
He's an amazing teacher, isn't he? He really, really is. So congratulations. And LHS School Resource Officer Bob Ulix received a Friends of Student Assistance Provider Award at last week's Illinois Association of Student Assistant Professional State Conference in Springfield. The award is given annually to an individual who demonstrates exceptional leadership, commitment, and dedication in the field of student assistance. So congratulations to Bob for his work with us. The following students were named Libertyville High School January Students of the Month: Kat Wordan, Brenda Zanzi, Victoria Cavalcanti, Carolyn McMahon, Hunter Van Wagner, Jack Donofrio, Justin Joss, and Kyle Copeland. The following VHHS DECA Club members received awards at the North Suburban DECA Area Contest held February 1st at the Donald E. Stevens Convention Center in Rosemont. Derek Manic, let me try that again, Derek Manicowits, Automotive Services, first place; Nebia Chaco and Marjorie Kiralenko. Buying and Merchandising Team, second place; Gabe Patton, Principals of Business Management and Administration, third place; Lauren Grudy, Restaurant Management, third place; Jared Moore, Marketing Management, fifth place; Ritesh Misra and Rohan Varshney, Financial Analysis Team, fifth place; Christina Crowe, Restaurant Management and Economics, in fifth place; Casey Gallis Dorfer and Casey Pedersen, Marketing Communications Team; Human Relations, second place; and Patrick Jupek, Marketing Communications and Economics, third place. And the DECA Club is advised by Cheryl Olson. So congratulations to all of those students. Congratulations to the D-128 seniors named 2011 National Merit Finalists. From LHS, Samuel Teddy Andor, Thomas August, Mitch Boynton, Tony Cow, Scott Cooper, Erica Dankers, Sonia Goesch, and May Yang. And VHHS, Molly Gilheart, David Kim, Daniel Koche, Kenneth Shabel, and Megan Wilgus. Merit Scholar Designees are selected on the basis of their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. And it is awesome every year to read the list and the numbers of students from our two high schools, an international merit finalist. So congratulations to those students and their parents. Three VHHS students received awards in the Third Annual Lake County Fire Chiefs YouTube Video Contest for Fire Safety and Burn Prevention. The award ceremony was held at the Advocate Condell Medical Center Conference Center in Libertyville on February 9th as part of the National Burn Awareness Week. Sophomore Kurt Wickbold's video, Home from the Holidays, received second-place honors, while senior Lindsay Yuculo and junior Lauren Hernandez captured third-place honors for their video, L2. The students were sponsored by VHHS Staff Representatives Sandy Martin and Jerry Moselli, respectively. As second-place winner, Kurt Wickbold received a $300 American Express gift card, while Lindsay Yuculo and Lauren Hernandez received a $200 gift card for placing third. So congratulations to those students and for winning their gift cards. The VHHS WISE team captured first place in the regional testing at the College of Lake County. The team captured first place with an amazing score of 500 out of 500 overall, as well as many individual medals. The team now advances to the March 11th sectional competition that is being hosted by VHHS and coordinated by Cougar, WISE team coach Josh Ravenscraft. And as you know, both of our teams have quite an extensive history of success in the WISE competition. The following LHS students received honors in the recent FCC LA competition. In Child Development, Brittany Donovan and Nikki Crum, first place and Most Outstanding; in Clothing, Goli Porvenian, first place; Alex Swinson was first place in Most Outstanding; and Carly Strucker in second place; Valerie Steinhauser in first place; Anna Godfrey in first place in Foods and Salads; Diana DeVelas, first place in Foods and Cookie Decorating; and Brooke Donovan, first place; Julie Algrim, second place; and Morden Dixon in second place. So congratulations to those students. And finally, six LHS students qualified as semifinalists for the United States Physics Team. 384 students were selected nationwide from over 4,000 students. The LHS semifinalists are Teddy Andor, Thomas August, Scott Cooper, Kenny Nash, Mark Ryan, and May Yang. Again, just another month of outstanding accomplishments by our students. So congratulations to everyone. Moving on with the superintendent's report, we have a special donation that we'd like to recognize tonight. We'd like to thank Ms. Judy Sugarman for donating a silver mink fur cape to the Libertyville High School Theater Department. And Judy, thank you for your donation and I know that the theater department is very excited about being able to use the mink in future productions. So thank you for your generosity as always. Okay, and two quick things, two things under other tonight. First of all, I want to remind the community that coming up in the near future, we will have our first of two school finance one-on-one classes. We're going to be working with the villages to take our show on the road, so to speak, and hope to have one of our classes at Libertyville Village Hall and one of our classes at the Vernon Hills Village Hall. So we're working with the village to make those arrangements to give our citizens an opportunity to come out to an area that they may be more familiar with than coming to school. So those will be announced at a future time. And finally, in the superintendent's report, as Pat mentioned earlier, there are many educational pieces of legislation being considered in Springfield right now. One of those pieces of legislation is regarding Illinois' school consolidation. And on behalf of the board and the District 128 community, I'd like to read a statement tonight regarding the board's position, the district's position regarding school consolidation. As many of you are aware, Illinois Governor Pat Quinn has proposed forced school consolidation in Illinois- forced school consolidation in Illinois that would eliminate nearly 600 Illinois school districts. Under his proposal, elementary and high school districts such as District 128 and our elementary feeder districts would be among the types of districts forced to consolidate. Governor Quinn has mapped out a plan and timeline for school consolidation. And there are currently bills under consideration in the Illinois House that would execute his plan to implement school consolidation as early as July 1st, 2012. Under the governor's proposal and companion legislation, such consolidation would take place without local voter approval. And as a result, would essentially eliminate the majority of Illinois' school districts and create new districts in their place. The proposal and legislation may require that the new districts be organized by: one, county; two, drawing new boundaries based on 2010 census data; three, overall area population; or four, some other as now undetermined means. In such scenarios, District 128 and our feeder districts would likely be dismantled and subject to state-mandated consolidation decided upon and approved by legislators in Springfield and not by the communities that we serve. While school consolidation may be necessary in some Illinois communities to ensure financial viability and quality curriculum, instruction, support programs, and co- and extracurricular opportunities for students, fortunately, the communities served by District 128 do not fall into these categories. District 128 receives little state aid relative to our total budget. And based on our local tax base, the generosity of our local stakeholders, and effective financial planning and decision-making, the district is in excellent financial condition. In addition, Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools are consistently ranked and recognized among the highest-achieving academic high schools in the state and the nation. Finally, the same can be said for the demonstrated excellence in our four elementary feeder districts: Oak Grove 68, Libertyville 70, Roundout 72, and Hawthorne 73. As such, Community High School District 128 sees the concept of forced consolidation as a state versus local control issue, particularly in a school district such as ours that receives little state aid, is in excellent financial condition, and continues to produce outstanding student achievement. In other words, we believe that the decision to consolidate or not to consolidate should rest in the hands of our local stakeholders and taxpayers and not in the hands of legislators, meaning 215 miles away from our district. To that end, over the next few days, District 128 will: one, develop and disseminate relevant information to educate our stakeholders regarding this important issue; two, identify key questions that local state representatives, senators, and stakeholders need to consider in assessing and deciding upon consolidation. The issues are many. And three, facilitate a comprehensive communication effort with our stakeholders to contact Governor Quinn, Senate President Colleton, House Speaker Madigan, and our local state legislators to assure that local voices are heard regarding the issue of school consolidation. In closing, District 128 has a long history of outstanding fiscal responsibility and excellent student achievement. As such, any decision to alter or change the course of our district should be made by our local stakeholders and taxpayers and not by state mandate. And Pat and I will be available for media attendance tonight for any questions that you might have after the board meeting. And Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, great, thank you. You know, I can't help but be extremely impressed. In the last 30 days, that list of accomplishments is incredible. I think the other thing is, it's incredible not only because of its sheer length, but there's local, state, and national recognition, I think, throughout both campuses. So really tremendous month in the middle of the wintertime when you would think it's kind of calm and quiet, okay? So I can only imagine what happens the last part of the year here tends to be the most ambitious. And so lots to look forward to. Second, I'll just highlight again what was just read. I think in my five years on the school board, this could be amongst the most significant things that I've seen or really had an opportunity to be involved in, okay? So I would highly encourage everyone on this board to spend the time that's necessary to be educated on this issue and to take whatever steps you feel are important to make sure that the people in our community and surrounding areas are educated on this pending legislation. I know even at dinner tonight, I had a discussion with my daughter on this, and she kind of looked at me, and she goes, "That, that couldn't really happen, could it?" And I think if there's anybody here that doesn't think that could happen, I have a surprise for you. I think it's very possible it could happen, okay? So please spend some time and make sure you're well informed on that issue. All right, moving on. I'd like to invite anyone from the public who would like to speak tonight. If you could state your name and address, please.
My three-minute machine.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board and staff. My name is Rob Sherman. My address is Box 7410, Buffalo Grove. You know me best from the moment of silence litigation that my daughter and I were involved in. And you mentioned Springfield. On Wednesday morning, I'll be in Springfield testifying in support of House Bill 293, which would repeal the moment of silence law. I come to you tonight to bring you some information. A student has asked me to articulate to you her grave concern and frustration, it's a very important matter, her grave concern and frustration that her science teacher, Mr. Bo Schaefer, is teaching the students biology class that creationism and intelligent design is a more viable option than evolution in explaining how the universe came to be. In one of the assignments that is entitled, "Objectives for Evolution Unit," question five, be able to explain how certain terms can be used to explain both macro-evolution and creation. Question six, explain how one can believe in both creation and evolution at the same time. Seven, describe the Cambrian explosion and irreducible complexity and explain how those support intelligent design, creation. Question 17, define and explain the evolution perspective and the creation perspective for the origin of life. Ladies and gentlemen, you cannot compare and contrast creation and evolution in a public school biology class. I found nothing in the Illinois State Board of Education Illinois Learning Standards for Science that refer to creationism or evolution. Here's a, here's another assignment entitled, "The Topics." There are several different topics. Explain it from the evolution perspective. Explain it from the creationism perspective. Here's another assignment, "Evolution Classification Review." Question number nine, according to creationists, mutations should result in blank, micro-evolution, while evolutionists believe mutation creates macro-evolution. Question 21, name a vestal structure. What does this illustrate? And question 22, what would creationists say about number 21? So as my time is expiring here, let me conclude by asking you to do the following. Number one, determine the facts. Find out whether or not this actually is the assignment from Mr. Bo Schaefer's class in which they're talking about evolution, creationism, and intelligent design instead of merely evolution. Number two, if in fact the facts bear out that Mr. Schaefer is teaching the kids the Christian perspective, that Christianity is science and not evolution, then I ask that you determine what the appropriate response is and implement such response. Keep me posted on what your decision is. But also, well, if the facts bear out, maybe you need to get somebody else in there to teach the kids to unlearn everything Mr. Schaefer taught them about creationism and intelligent design supposedly being science. It's not, if I can, I know my time has expired, but let me leave you with one more quick thing here from the Illinois PSA, the Prairie State Assessment Exam. They talk about, what are you supposed to know? What are students supposed to know? That millions of different species of plants, animals, et cetera, each descend from a common ancestor. That's evolution, not creationism. And students are expected to understand that the universe, the solar system, was formed from a new nebular cloud of dust and gas 4.6 billion years ago, not 5,000 years ago, as creations believe. So please look into the merits of these concerns and get back to me. You've got my contact information. I look forward to hearing from you in the future. I'm familiar with the protocol that you don't respond at this time. But please look into that, and thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sherman. Okay, the consent vote agenda was reviewed in committee. If I could, I'd like a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
I make the motion that we approve the consent vote agenda.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deli Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, program and Personnel Committee update. Chairperson Mauer.
Okay, we have Board Policy 6230 Library Media Program up for a second reading and adoption. There have been no changes since the last reading. Questions? Make a motion to approve. Include the Library Media Program Board Policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Deli Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Okay, the next item, our educational tour requests. And we are looking for motion to approve the 14 field trips listed on the agenda.
I move to approve the 14 field trips listed in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Deli Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
And then finally, we have one, the employment of employees. We should approve on that.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Deli Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we're finished.
My suspicion is looking at the field trips, there's some more recognition coming. Okay, Facilities and Finance Committee, Chairperson Overrider.
Yes, we have a couple of items for action tonight. The first item is that the administration is asking for adoption of the resolution to begin preparing the tentative budget for fiscal year 2012.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to prepare the tentative budget for FY 2012.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Deli Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our second item tonight is, as part of the ongoing process to identify cost-reduction opportunities, the administration has brought to our attention an opportunity to pay off and retire a loan with the Village of Vernon Hills that was taken out in 2001 for the completion of the Nike site stadium. It was a 20-year loan, I believe, in 2001 for $1,003,000. We have 700 and, just over $702,000 still outstanding. And Yasmin, you're really recommending to pay that off now, which will save over $283,000 in interest expenses. Plus, there's a bonus payment of $31,500 for the prepayment, correct?
Correct.
Do you want to speak any further in terms of, you know, what our money's currently making today in the bank and why we want to do that?
As you know, the interest rates are really at a historical low. And as much as we have tried to increase our interest earnings, we're not finding any instruments out there that would pay us more than 43%. In the past, our interest earnings have been 4% to 6%. So we've seen a really tremendous reduction in our interest income. But the fact that we have a loan that we have to pay, you know, 4% or 5% on, on an annual basis, it makes sense to use the money that we currently have in our reserves and pay off this loan.
So we're really looking for a motion to go ahead and retire early this loan right away, correct?
That's correct. And when we had initially secured the loan from Vernon Hills, part of our discussion was our ability to prepay it. If that should happen, the loan agreement actually calls for a bonus that would be available to the school district for this early payment, and that bonus is $31,500. So in a way, the district is realizing some additional revenues by paying this loan.
When was the, what was the original term of the loan?
20 years.
And how many years left? I'm sorry, you mentioned that.
About 30.
Or 10 years.
10 years. Yes, it was in 2001, so about 10 years.
So we're halfway through the loan. So it's a significant savings in interest, plus the bonus on top.
Our initial agreement was that there would be no principal payments in the first few years. However, because of the district's financial condition, we were able to pay some of the principal on it too, thereby retiring at least half a million dollars sooner than we had anticipated to. So we realized some savings in the past. Now here's an opportunity to save some additional money.
It just really seems to make a lot of sense with what our money is currently making in the bank. We have funds to more than pay for this, so it seems logical that we'd want to do this at this time.
Right, and I have looked at our cash flow, and there is sufficient room in there to retire this loan.
Okay, then I make a motion that we prepay the Village of Vernon Hills loan and retire the debt indefinitely.
Second. Any discussion? I guess my only comment, in the unlikely event, though, that this moves the other way over the next 13 or 14 years. That's the risk.
That is the risk. However, I don't know when we'll see 4% or 5% interest.
Okay, thank you, I hope you're right. All right, roll call, please.
Deli Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Overrider.
Aye.
Sugarman.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for looking at that.
The only other item that we wanted to update on is the Libertyville High School, Vernon Hills High School Swimming Pool Study. And, you know, Alex is very close to that, Alex Deli Polly. So would you mind updating the group on the work today?
Not at all. We recently completed a ventilation upgrade at the Libertyville Pool, and we decided that after that, that it would be good to look at the entire district, both pools, and characterize the systems and all the factors that go into operating the pool. And so that going forward proactively, you could understand just what would happen if something was different from one pool to another, or there were different activities, different populations. And this is going to allow us to get that data over the course of a year and be able then to feel like we know our pools very thoroughly going forward. So we just, we just started the data collection phase of that where the instructors, the athletic directors, and the staff were actually taking account of activity in the pool over the period of different times and in different seasons. All four seasons will be monitored, so that's why it's going to take a year. So it's a stay tuned kind of thing at this point to see where the data takes us. And, you know, first thing we're going to be doing is looking at all the mechanical systems and what components are there and how many air changes, and just what kind of chemicals are used. And just a very thorough analysis to understand what we have in both pools. I think that's where, it's about where we are at the moment.
Thank you. Think it'll be some great information to have. And that concludes the Facilities and Finance Committee report for this month.
Okay, thank you. Property Committee did not meet, although I'll just say thanks again to everybody for their ongoing support of the Briner Preservation Committee's efforts. Special Education District of Lake County Delegate Runstad asked me to give an update. As you know, there's been a search for a new superintendent for SEDOL, and I'm pleased to report that they have made a selection. Dr. Thomas Moline, he was selected from amongst 24 candidates for the position. They had six people that they were interviewed, that they interviewed, and two finalists. And just because I think his credentials are incredibly interesting, I thought I would read that Dr. Moline served as- read that Dr. Moline served as both a public school superintendent and a county director of special education. He has also served as a principal in schools for special needs students and as a teacher of special education. He earned his PhD in K-312 Administration Leadership from Michigan State, received a Master of Arts in Public School Administration, and his Bachelor of Science in Elementary and Special Education from Central Michigan University. For all three degrees, he graduated magna cum laude, and at the January 27 meeting, he was unanimously approved by the Governing Board of SEDOL. So congratulations to SEDOL, and best of luck to Dr. Moline, who brings, I think, a very impressive set of credentials to the position, so we're very happy about that for our folks at SEDOL. Illinois Association of School Board, again, I mentioned a spring dinner meeting, and other than that, I have no other updates. Is there anything else? Do they want to bring up? Okay, motion to adjourn, please. Fall in favor? Thanks very much. Have a nice night.